Good evening. Can you hear it? Okay. We'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Very hard to believe that today is the first day of the last quarter for this year. And my children rejoiced. Enjoy Pi Day 3.14. And with that, we will go with roll call.
All members are present.
Wonderful. We have in our audience this evening Devin and Aiden Nishody, who are here from Troop 202, and they are going to lead us. They are Boy Scouts from Troop 202, and they're going to lead us in the pledge. Will you please join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our list is consent. May I have a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If I might, I noticed four trainees for our bus driving transportation facility group, and I want to give a little... Ryan, could you give us and the board just a little update on bus drivers since we've placed an incentive in place?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I spoke with Amy Bevitt over transportation today, and first of all, she said she's seen a definite increase in, A, the quantity of applications, and B, in her opinion, the quality of those applicants, both very positive signs. Just some facts, some data. Three drivers already finished with their training and are subbing, so that's an immediate impact. There are nine others who are in various stages of the training. So that's a total of 12 that we've hired, four more that are in the interview process, and another four more behind them if, for some reason, those four don't come onto the pool. So she said she was just ecstatic at the response that we've received.
Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that update. Any comments from the board? Well, wonderful. Next on our agenda, we have a report, and the board has requested that we have our counsel, David Day, present to us some updates to the Indiana bargaining law. And with that, we'd like to invite David Day to the podium to share some more information with the board.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Going to talk a little bit about collective bargaining, and specifically tonight focus on the question of the exclusive representative and how that's determined. Under Indiana law, the determination of the collective bargaining exclusive representative is very important, because the obligation of the school employer, which of course is this board, is to bargain with that exclusive representative. And the exclusive representative is determined either by the board agreeing that an organization that presents itself to the board has evidence that it represents the majority of the employees, or the collective bargaining representative, the exclusive representative, can be determined by election. And I wasn't around when things started here in Carmel, but your exclusive representative has been the CCEA for as long as I can remember, and probably from the outset of collective bargaining, which started sometime in the mid-'70s. But sometimes there comes a question then as to whether the exclusive representative continues to represent the majority of employees. And I want to talk a little bit tonight about the process by which that question can be determined. So to start with, under Indiana Code Section 2029-53, either the school employer, which would be the board, or a school employee organization that asserts it represents 20% of the members, or 20% of the teachers in the unit, may file a petition with the Indiana Education Employment Relations Board to decertify the current association as the exclusive representative. And if the school employer were to file that petition, it must assert that the school employer has a good faith doubt that the previously certified school employer organization represents a majority of the employees in the bargaining unit. And the question then becomes, how would you have that good faith doubt to believe that? Well, starting in 2011, the law requires the current employer organization to file an affidavit showing its membership percentage. And so if based upon that affidavit, the current association is not representing the majority of the employees, then we think you would have a good faith doubt to assert if you were to file a petition. And I want to emphasize tonight that this is information I'm providing to the board tonight. This is not any type of recommendation, not seeking any type of board action. This is simply a report on what the law prescribes if there's a question as to who the exclusive representative is for the employees. So, once the school employer or another school organization or the teachers were to file such a petition with IRB, then IRB takes over the process. At that point in time, it's up to IRB to run the process to determine the outcome. So, and what would happen is IRB would send a notice to the school employer, asking the notice to be posted in the places that you would normally post notices affecting school employees, so probably teacher lounges and maybe your website, places like that. And in that notice, which is on a form that IRB gives you, you put the names of the parties who filed the petition, a description of the bargaining unit that's involved, and a statement that any interest party may intervene up to three days prior to a hearing that the board will hold to intervene, to participate in the process. And this notice has to remain posted for a period of 10 days from the time that you receive it. Now, the question is, is can you file this petition just anytime you want to, or can any other employer organization file or the teachers file anytime they want to? And the answer is no. Generally speaking, a petition for a decertification, which is what this is called, cannot be filed if there's an existing collective bargaining agreement between the school employer and the school employer organization. However, a petition can be filed between January 15th and February 14th of the year the collective bargaining agreement expires. Now, obviously, that period has passed for this year. However, in order for there to be this bar, there has to be an existing collective bargaining agreement. And if the collective bargaining agreement has expired, then a petition could be filed. Now, under the law, a collective bargaining agreement cannot begin, collective bargaining cannot begin until August 1st. So there will always come a time when the prior contract expires, because it expires, in your case, on June 30th. And since another contract can't be bargained until August 1st, there would not be a contract in effect during that period of time, and therefore, there could be a petition filed after June 30th and before the next collective bargaining agreement takes place. Now, a school employer organization can intervene, which means basically they can get a spot in the selection we're going to talk about, if they can show an interest from at least 20% of the bargaining unit. And after an intervening group shows that interest, the IRB election officer, in other words, IRB will appoint someone to be in charge of this election that's coming, can then grant the intervenor access to bargaining unit members. For example, the intervenors would have access to school email, bulletin boards, et cetera, equal to the access given to the current exclusive representative. In fact, I think any teacher could probably argue that they have access to the system at that point in time. Because during the time that you have an exclusive representative and there is no challenge, only the exclusive representative has access to those means of communication. But during this period of time, then other teachers, other organizations would have access. So IRB investigates whether there's cause to believe that a question exists as to whether the designated representative represents a majority of the school employees. And if they find that cause exists, it holds a hearing. And if the hearing shows a question of representation does exist, then IRB directs an election to be held. And that election's held by secret ballot, and it's held in whatever unit that the IRB deems to be appropriate. Okay? Now, so you have this election. The key thing to remember here is that only an exclusive representative that gets a majority of votes from all the employees in the unit can be certified as the representative. In other words, it's not just who votes in the election. If you have 950 teachers, then an organization has to get 476 votes in order to be designated as the exclusive representatives. And the ballot that they use must contain the name of the petitioning school employer organization, if there is one, or the names of all the school employer organizations that have evidence that they have 20% representation. In other words, you have to show at a minimum that you have 20% of the people in the unit to get on the ballot. And there also has to be a provision for choosing no representation by a school employer organization. So conceivably, you could have the current organization, you could have a competitive organization, and you could have no representation. I suppose conceivably, you could have five different organizations, all representing 20% of the employees, and a sixth, no representation in the process. So you have this election, and again, this election is held by secret ballot. The eligible voters are those school employees in the unit. The school employer is required to file a list with IRB as to who is in that unit. So they're looking for you to kind of be the registration, if you think about typical election. The voting may be by a mail ballot, in other words, a mail-in process, and it's usually within a 14 to 30-day polling period. And then IRB, in the presence of authorized observers, counts and tabulates the ballots. If there's at least three options in the original election, and no option receives a majority of the votes, then IRB can conduct one runoff election. So they can say, we're going to take, throw out, let's say there's three choices, throw out the bottom one, run a runoff election. Also, if there is an inconclusive result, like if two, there's two organizations on the ballot, but neither one gets a majority because perhaps not everybody votes, then they can run one rerun election. But there's a limit. They will not continue to run elections until they get a winner. They will limit the number of elections that they will hold. And if no choice receives a majority of the votes from eligible employees, then the status quo remains in effect. So unless you get a majority of people in the unit to vote a certain way, then you stay with the current exclusive representatives. And then, once you get through the results of the election, they certify it. If people want to object to the election or the process, et cetera, they can. IRB will hold a hearing and make a decision. So, in this process, what is your role as a school employer? Well, as I said, once you file the petition, the process is under the authority of IRB. You do not have any role in running the election, making determinations who's on the ballot, et cetera. That is all done by IRB. You have a duty to assist IRB by providing information, access to your facilities, et cetera, as IRB may request. And as an employer, you have a limited ability to communicate on the process. You can't, for example, promise raises or benefits, et cetera, if employees vote a certain way. You can provide factual information, objective information, but you are not a partisan participant in the election process. That's my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Ms. Knowles?
Thank you, David, and we do appreciate you coming out. I know as a board, we brought you out. We had some concerns that membership is low, and we want to be certain that all of our employees who are part or not part of the association have a voice. And so we appreciate getting some options from you. And with that, I'll start with questions. Pam?
Yes. If a petition is filed after June 30th, because that's when the contract is over, and bargaining is supposed to start August 1st, what happens to this process if it's not over by the time formal bargaining is supposed to start?
Well, I think that's a good question, and one that really has not been faced by IRB before, because, as you recall, they added that bargaining date in 2011, legal changes, law changes, but they didn't change the certification statutes during that time. So what I think you would probably see would be an effort by IRB to expedite the process so that there would be a determination that could be had in time for bargaining. I also would suggest to IRB that, to the extent there are deadlines in the current law, those ought to be relaxed so this process could go forward. So we would be treading on some new ground, but I think that they would probably work to try to finalize it as quickly as they could.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
David, could you speak a little bit about what no representation would look like as far as, let's say, the bargaining process or something? What kind of option would that be for the unit?
Right. I may be the only one in the room who's old enough to remember when there was no representation. That's kind of scary. Maybe others will agree that they may remember that. But we'd be going back to a time in which ultimately, the employer sets the salary in the terms and conditions of work. It's doable. I mean, obviously, the vast majority of employees in America don't have collective bargaining, and salaries still get set and monies get paid, et cetera. It just would be done outside of bargaining. So I would anticipate that, as a board, you would probably set up criteria, schedules, et cetera, by which you would determine salary. If we go back again before, a long time ago, there was actually a state schedule of salaries that was applied statewide. Roger, you're old enough to remember all this.
Right.
I kept looking around for some...
Well, you pretty well said it, but half of our employees, you've always had that way. I mean, everybody except teachers, or nobody except teachers, none of our employee groups except teachers are represented, so... Well, I'm sorry, with the exception of bus drivers. We do discuss with bus drivers. So that's the one exception, and that's pretty typical across the state. There are some exceptions. So as David said, prior to the mid-'70s, that's how it was in Indiana.
See, as I would understand the process, you could seek input from wherever you wanted to. I mean, you could talk to teachers individually, group, you know, whatever you decided as far as an employer, as to what input you wanted, just like I think you, well, you talk to your bus drivers as a group, although ultimately, you don't bargain that salary, and you get input from other employee groups, I assume.
But ultimately, that would be, in this voting process, this ballot process run by IRB, that would be a choice of those in the unit?
By statute, it has to be on the ballot, at least in the first ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy?
Would the decision to file for this decertification be an agenda item, an action item on our agenda?
I would think that's the way you'd want to handle it. You would not want to, I think if we were going to file it, you would not want the first question to be the authority as to filing it. So I would think you would do it as an action item in a public meeting.
That brings another question. So with the timing, I guess thinking ahead or trying to get my mind around this, that action vote, if it was brought up, would come at any time before that July 1st, and then it would just be filed after that?
Correct.
Okay. And that timing on that is all new to everyone, too?
Well, it could be any time the board chose, but you'd want it before we filed, so...
I do have a question. And I'm not quite sure how to phrase this, because I don't know the answer, and this is, um... Do we have to go through this entire process if there's a majority of our teachers who are interested in... You cited an intervenor, and, you know, throughout this, I guess on the fifth page, you cited the intervenor. Could an intervenor come forward without this process? Is that a possibility? This seems, I... How does that work? Does it?
I think in situations where you have an incumbent association, you would probably have to go through an election process. If, for example, let's say you voted, let's say the vote was taken and the vote was no representation, and then a year from now, a group came forward and said, you know, we didn't like the no representation thing, after all, we would like to be recognized by the board. If the board has evidence to believe that that organization represents a majority of the unit, and again, that's usually, there's actually cards, it's a card campaign, that people might sign off to say they want to be represented by this group. And they might come to you and say, look, we have cards signed by a majority of your employees. That's probably, if we went back far enough, something like that happened in Carmel to start the first exclusive representative, would be my guess.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, but I think to expand on your question, Leila, I mean, there are three groups that can file a decertification petition.
Right.
One being the employer, one being the employer organization, and the third being a group of 20% of the teachers.
Right. Right. And the employer organization has to be able to assert and show that they represent 20% of the teachers. So if we go back to probably the mid-'70s, there were basically two organizations. There was the ISTA affiliates, and then there was the American Federation of Teacher Affiliates. And there were elections held where the incumbent group was in, and then the other group would come and say, look, we represent 20%, and they would ask for an election to be held. Candidly, the biggest issue is you have to have a majority vote for any type of change. And again, it's not just the majority of who votes, it's the majority of the group.
Questions? So really, to piggyback on what you just said, for this process to work for everyone involved, word does need to get out to be involved in this process.
Yes, and IRB will notify people that they have a right to vote.
Okay.
Et cetera. But in the, I think, one of the more recent elections, I think the unit consisted of 25 teachers, and they could never get more than 10 to vote. So, you know, we're not a good voting country sometimes.
No, we're not. And then also, one of the first slides does say, and I assume this would hinge on this to a good amount, is you wrote, "Since 2011, the law requires the current employee organization to file an affidavit showing its membership percentage." So good faith doubt can be based on affidavit. Do we have an amount of membership from that?
Yes.
We do. And that's been reported at 29%.
Okay.
In the affidavit.
Any other questions? Kathy, I think, did you have anything else?
I just was kind of thinking along Michael, and Tricia's questions about the three choices for who could file this petition, and if a group of teachers wanted to do that, not saying they do, but if they did, they would have to do that without the use of school property until the petition was filed.
As we read the current law, we think that's true. Part of me says that seems unusual, because it's certainly, but since the bar is only 20%, I think they're saying, you know, you've got to have enough gumption to get 20% and enough organization to get there. And then we'll treat you seriously in the election.
But regardless of who chooses to move ahead, it still has the same timeline, same parameters?
Right.
David, thank you very much for coming out this evening and sharing this.
Thank you.
We might have follow-up questions, and we will be sending those via email. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm not disinterested in your next topic, but...
Thank you, David.
Next on our agenda, which is a very, very exciting topic that we have coming to us tonight, it's our workshop topic, our High Ability Program Evaluation. And we have Dr. Dudley, who's going to segue for us.
Great, thank you. And this evening, we have many committee members from our High Ability Program Evaluation here to share a little bit about the process and also the recommendations for the High Ability Program Evaluation. So I'll turn it over to Dr. McFarland.
And we, too, would like to wish you Happy Pi Day, and to honor Happy Pi Day, instead of giving you slices of pie, we thought we would invite you down to the table, and we will treat you to some numbers instead. So if you could come down to the table, and we'd like you to think about working in partnerships.
You're going to have to bring that up.
The mics aren't working.
I'm sorry. So we can't do this?
Yeah. And to get you into the numbers for High Ability Program Evaluation, I'd like to introduce Eric Rapp, who is Eric, his new supervisor, California, KI division. He's worked with High Ability Program Evaluation, and he's been working very hard with High Ability Identification and Program Development, so if you'll review through this section.
So what we have here is a picto chart of some of the data that we came through as we went through the program evaluation. And what we would like you to do now is you have a small half-sheet that has just random numbers, well, random to you right now, and then the picto chart has some blanks. All of those numbers are used once. If you have questions, feel free to ask. We would like to, you and your partner or partners, to fill them in to the best of your abilities at this point, and we'll just give you a few minutes to work on that. to fill them in to the best of your abilities at this point, and we'll just give you a few minutes to work on that. It's empty. It was just hidden. So hopefully you enjoyed this, and some of you are still just wrapping up, but I heard some great conver-... The key, you like the key, right? A hundred? I heard you say that you were getting a C, so a C would be great. Seventy percent.
How about a 50%?
Ooh. Well, I was going to say, it's a growth mindset, and we'll let you try again. So, once again, here, the High Ability Program by the numbers at Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize their potential in an ever-changing world. And then that first section, I'll start with the 834. Eight hundred and thirty-four students in grades one through four did challenge testing last year, or took, tested for placement within our elementary challenge program. That was during the spring/summer of 2015. Two hundred and seventy-seven of those were placed into challenge. At grades five through seven, eight hundred and seventy-five students tested for honors math or honors ELA, and two hundred and thirty-four of those were placed. For a grand total of 2,938 testing hours for our students in grades one through seven. So we spent nearly 3,000 hours testing in grades one through seven. But then, the surprising number, I think, to all of us as we did this, was the number for grades eight through 11 was zero. And the explanation for that is that, once they get to the high school, they self-select their classes. And so the advanced classes, they're open to take. And this is much in line with College Board and their access and success. Allowing them to identify, if they're willing to go forth and put forth that effort, that we give them the opportunity and they achieve success. So that zero is a little bit different than the 2,938 that we saw in one through seven. This is a great number. One hundred percent of our BC Calculus, AP BC Calculus, earned a five, not just passed, but earned a five, which is outstanding. And that's one of the tougher tests. So that was a, that's a huge tip of the hat to those folks that put that in. Ninety percent of middle school and high school High Ability students earned a pass-plus on the 2015 ELA. And you can see there also ninety percent of the High Ability in elementary earned I-Step ELA. One extra note on Pie Day was that math and English combined High Ability students in the elementary and middle school, 100% either were pass or pass-plus. So there were not any, did not passes, which is very, very good for any district to be able to put up those numbers. And then the last section. This one, I thought, was the most difficult section, probably for most of us. The number of English language learners was 11%. The number of twice-exceptional students is 2% in our High Ability program. And then the number of CCS educators who have the qualifications and have earned credentials for teaching gifted and talented students is 20. And I thought one of the most exciting numbers was that 78% of all of our elementary teachers were very interested in going through professional development that dealt with social-emotional learning, twice-exceptional learning, or English language learners. And then at the middle school and high school, it was above 50% also, which are great numbers, showing that we have a group of teachers that are really willing to learn and in the growth mindset. So that's very nice to see. The last two, the number of required academic domains is two, math and language usage or language arts. And then 2,088 students right now are identified as High Ability in one of the two domains. It could be one or both of the domains, but 2,088. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. McFarland. Thank you.
Okay, so we wanted to kind of highlight our committee to begin. We had a committee of 27 members. And we had representation from elementary, middle school, and high school. The committee began its work in the spring of 2015 and concluded late in November 2015. So we had a short timeframe for doing a lot of work and accomplishing quite a bit. It was a fabulous committee. So you can see at the elementary level, we had challenge teachers, teachers of advanced math, and instructional coach, assistant principal and principal. Middle school, we had an English teacher, math teacher, department chair, and assistant principal. High school, teachers for English, math, science, and social studies, and instructional coach at that level, a department chair, and a principal. So broad representation. And tonight, we have Sarah Ah here, who's Prairie Trace Challenge Teacher. We have Stephanie Barnes, Creekside Middle School, English Department Chair and English teacher. Lori Lockery, who's a Mohawk Trails Challenge Teacher. Dan Purdon, Carmel High School Math Teacher and an Instructional Coach. Tim Ferriss, who is an elementary principal at Town Meadow. And Jay Volley, who's a Woodbrook Elementary Challenge Teacher. And so they'll be helping me present this information. So we wanted to make sure that you were aware of who our High Ability students were and what our obligation is under Indiana code. And without reading through that, just so that you are aware that Carmel identifies and defines its High Ability students in accordance with code. And basically, what we say is that we identify students who are, have high achievement or have higher potential and/or ability. And that we also use qualitative factors when we're identifying our students. So we cast a broad net, and we look at ability, and we look at achievement, we look at other factors, qualitative factors, in identifying those students. And that's in alignment with what the code requires us to do. And our obligation is that we identify in those two domains, so English Language Arts and in math, and then we provide differentiated services for students in those two areas. So as we were preparing for program evaluation and kind of going back to information that was already in our archives, we realized the last program evaluation for High Ability was done in 1989. So just a little while ago. And at that time, this mission statement evolved and developed. "In keeping with the mission of Carmel Clay Schools to effectively meet the educational needs of all students, rigorous programs are provided for High Ability students whose general intellect and academic achievement are significantly beyond their peers. These programs provide differentiated curriculum and instructional strategies, especially designed to help gifted learners meet their individual potential." And you'll notice the terminology, gifted learners, High Ability students. And those terms are pretty much used interchangeably. It used to be gifted and talented, and that was really the popular terminology for High Ability learners. Recently, in the literature and in the law, in the state of Indiana, they've started using the terminology High Ability. So we kind of use the two interchangeably. We believe that that mission statement really is in keeping with the great work that the board has done recently with our mission statement, Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize potential in an ever-changing world and our vision, right behind you there, experience excellence, explore opportunities, and realize potential. So using that mission statement, as old as it was, as a jumping-off point, that created the focus for the work of the Program Evaluation Committee. And we looked and asked this question, "How closely are we aligned with our purpose as stated in the vision statement? And what can we do to refine and improve our efforts for the benefit of our students?" And that leads us to the process of program evaluation. So I know you have seen similar slides to this before, and you are well aware of what our program evaluation process looks like. We began by looking at pertinent research, evidence-based practices, and then gifted programming standards from the National Association for Gifted Children. This led to the formulation of questions of inquiry in five specific domains, and we'll be presenting on those five domains tonight. So the questions of inquiry guided next steps, telling our story, that's our perceptual data, gathering and analyzing data, quantitative, qualitative, historical data, synthesizing the data, creating summary data statements. The committee next identified interests, determined strengths, needs, challenges, based on the findings from the literature, and we reviewed the data. Finally, they developed recommendations based on the research and our current reality. So those are the findings and recommendations we'll be sharing with you tonight. And I'll turn it over to Sarah Ah, who will speak to you about the programming standards.
Okay. So the first thing you should have noticed from the 1989 mission statement was that it was only focused on intellect. And what you're going to see on this slide is that these six standards go well beyond just intellect. We're looking at the whole child. The first standard is learning and development, and it talks about self-understanding, awareness of needs, and cognitive and affective growth. Standard two is the assessment, the identification, learning progress and outcomes, and the evaluation of the program. Standard three, curriculum and planning and instruction. Curriculum planning, talent development, culturally relevant curriculum and resources. Four, you look at the learning environments, personal competence, social competence, leadership, cultural competence, and communication competence. Standard five, programming, variety of programming, coordinated services, collaboration, comprehensiveness, policies and procedures, and career pathways. And finally, standard six, professional development. The talent development, social, emotional development, lifelong learners, and ethics. Being a challenge teacher, gifted and talented teacher, High Ability teacher for 14 years, you have to look at the past. It was not a bad past. We used a matrix, we had kids qualify, and it was based on a score. As we moved through this, we see that sometimes kids weren't qualifying, so then they added new IQ tests to see if they really scored high in reading, or really scored high in math, can we get this kid in? And then you started to have teachers recommend students. They're starting to see more and more kids in the Gen Ed program that need this type of learning environment. Just in my time as a High Ability teacher, I have seen children that, in a classroom, like, we don't know how to reach them, we can't get them motivated, that there's sometimes the behavior problems, and you put them into a gifted environment, and they flourish. And so looking at this, this is why the program evaluation and why we do need changes, and hopefully the changes that we're recommending you want to see, because I think there's so many kids, and I can speak for all those on the committee, that aren't identified, that truly need this type of learning environment. And they need to look at it as a whole child, not just a gifted child intellectually. But how do you help them with those emotions inside? How do you help them recognize peer pressure, their differences? And a lot of it is for their parents, too. I'm sure anyone that's had a back-to-school night with a parent stands up there, as I do, and I tell them, "I know that sometimes your child pushes you to the brink, but you have to have someone as an educator that understands that child and loves that child." And that's exactly what I think behind this whole program evaluation, I think that was the forefront, is that the whole child was put first. And those teachers that want the professional development, and we want these changes, is because we truly believe that these children need the best. And that's not just always the top of the curriculum. That's the best in everything, to make them a whole, well-rounded child. As far as, I don't know which one I want to... As far as, I don't know which one I want to push to advance it. There we go, sorry. So on the committee, we used key concepts from the standards to drive questions of inquiry. First, we had identification and ongoing placement. So we talked about to what extent is our high ability program's identification process effective in finding all students in need of advanced curriculum and instruction in the domain served. Curriculum and instruction, in what ways are the curriculum and instruction in the high ability program appropriately differentiated to meet the needs of high ability students? Program design, to what extent is our high ability program designed to meet the needs of high ability students? The affective dimension, is how effective is our high ability program in meeting the affective needs of high ability students? And professional development, to what extent are educators effectively prepared to meet the needs of high ability students? And that was pretty much four meetings. We used that to really drive discussions.
So I will pass it on, pass it back to Martha. So next, we'd like to talk to you just a bit about our data collection and analysis process. Here you can see the data and information sources that the committee used. We looked at quantitative data, qualitative data, historical data, and the research literature. And we did our best to triangulate data where possible across our quantitative, qualitative sources, and we looked for trends across years. The committee did a wonderful job of digging deeply into the data. They worked in subgroups of five or six based on question of inquiry, selected a question of inquiry. They really did a good data dive, pulled the data, created those data statements. And then the really amazing thing was, after we started reporting out across the subcommittees, we began to see several similar themes emerge, and we could begin to triangulate that data. And once we began to see the power in the numbers and the multiple sources, we really began to feel validated that we're on the right track. So that was the next piece in all of this. And I'll turn it over now to Stephanie Barnes, who will talk to you about identification and ongoing placement.
All right. What's important to realize about our identification process is that it's reliable, valid, and developmentally appropriate for our school corporation and for the state of Indiana and the laws that we follow. It ensures that there's a proper screening for all students, as Martha already mentioned. The net is very broad, so we hit all of those students that may be in the past years that we have missed. Information is available to parents via our website and through messaging systems, as well as direct emails and contact to parents who qualify, who students qualify. It establishes an ongoing identification process, which is a little bit different than what we've seen in the past, where it was kind of a one-and-done process. Now we have an ongoing system where students can qualify any year that they're in the system. You'll notice that we use three different measures. Achievement, which is the first step, and we now are using the NWEA, which the state of Indiana says that we can use because it's a normed assessment. And that's our first opportunity to catch students. The second is their potential, which we use the COGAP verbal in language arts. And then the qualitative, which is the SIGES, which is a new form that we've never used before, at least not since I've been in Carmel Place Schools. And that's the scales for identifying gifted students, and that's a form that's filled out by teachers. So we really have changed our process that was very narrow and made it all-encompassing and really inclusive to include as many students as possible. We really want to ensure that we have multiple indicators. So we're looking at multiple scores, as well as teachers' input and other data beyond just the data that we used to use in the past, which was just the ability screening. The district also uses, and of course, assessments for mathematics, as well as, brand-new this year, a pre-algebra readiness assessment for placement decisions regarding honors math at the middle school level. Some strengths of our current program. Overall, our high ability students in grades K through 12, excuse me, K through eight are appropriately identified. Students are placed and are monitored and have been highly successful. And at the high school, we have a direct entrance program that is decided upon by the student and by their parents. And again, that's one of the strengths of our program, is that availability at the high school level. And for the most part, students placed in high school classes based on appeal process experienced success in their continued placement. That was something that was a surprise for our committee. We saw that students that were waving in that hadn't qualified in the past were still very successful at the high school level. So that's definitely a strength. Something that we knew was a challenge and that we needed to work on was that we needed to make sure that we were aligned with the Indiana code definition of identifying high ability students, which is why we have broadened the net and added in the qualitative measure, as well as the achievement with NWEA, to make sure that we're giving students all the opportunity under the Indiana code and to ensure students have opportunities to participate in honors classes, excuse me, based upon all of those multiple measures. Let me expand a little bit on those multiple pathways. We have revised those, and they continue to be looked at, and it's an ongoing process. It's not just something that is set in stone, but it'll be ongoing based upon the change in Indiana laws. Here's some recommendations. We want to establish a process that creates multiple pathways for high ability identification that's consistent with Indiana code and IDOE guidance, and make sure that it connects with those three measurements that we talked about, achievement, ability, and qualitative factors. And it provides clear communication through a variety of channels for all stakeholders regarding the identification process. That was something that was really important to us, that communication piece, not just between stakeholders in the classroom, teachers and principals, but with parents as well. So teachers are involved, parents are involved, everybody is looking out for each individual child. We also wanted to make sure that within that net that we weren't missing students. So that's why we have those three measures. We didn't want to miss any of our English language learners or miss any of our twice exceptional students. So by casting that broad net and looking at those three different measures, we feel like we are being more inclusive and less exclusive than we've been in the past. And now we'll take a look at our program design.
Well, as we, as you identify students, you want to be able to place them into a program that really will meet their needs. And I think we're going to talk today just for a moment about what we'd like to, what the design looks like for the program and recommendations for that design going forward. After meeting the criteria that set in front of us from the state, we want to make sure that we provide a continuum of flexible, continuum of services to flexibly meet the needs of the students. And I think a key part to that is that within each classroom, the range of needs is quite diverse, from ability to achievement to what each student is able to carry on in each classroom. What each student needs, I think, is the crux of what we want to be able to meet in program design. I want to focus on a couple of the points here. Using current technologies, including online learning and assistive technologies to enhance and access to high-level programming, to engage families and the community, make sure that all stakeholders have a say in what the design of this program looks like. And the next one below that, to develop a thoughtful and multi-year program that's relevant to students in all talent areas. The emphasis here really will not only be on academic learning, but on social, emotional learning as well. That was a key finding of the committee as we got together in our groups, that that was a very specific need that we wanted to make sure was addressed in the designing of our program going forward. So the strengths of our program, as it exists currently, based on achievement data from a variety of measures across years and grade levels, our students demonstrate exceptional achievement in advanced coursework. Our general ed students also achieve high levels at the high school of self-selected advanced coursework. And a range of opportunities for elective studies at secondary level provide students opportunities to develop talent and pursue interests. The key part for this is the, there are several things that we can do first for our program going forward. Opportunities for high ability programming in science and social studies are inconsistent at the elementary and middle school levels. Students can take advanced coursework in the high school, but in the middle school, that really is not the case. And that's something that we really want to be able to focus on, I think, in the future. Integrated curriculum within the elementary challenge program is available only to students who qualify based on ELA achievement or verbal ability. And that's a concern as well. At the middle school and elementary school, honors science and social studies courses are not available, so we want to make sure the opportunities are there for them in those younger grades as well as the high school. Supports are needed for English learners with twice exceptional students who are also high ability learners, and we need to recognize and address those social, emotional needs really more systematically. Technology integration and the use of digital resources is also inconsistent across the classrooms. There really are a large number of exceptional students in the area of technology, and to be able to use the gifts and talents they have in those domains, I think, will be a really, really key factor. Focus group data has shown that established a need for professional development on how we're going to differentiate within the classroom and the high ability room. And when the committee meets, the technology integration committee puts forth their recommendations later on. We want to make sure that that really is blended into the program design we have for the high ability classroom as well. So what would our recommendations be? We think to develop a vertically articulated science and social studies curricula for high ability students in elementary and middle school, and expand elementary program options in kindergarten and first grade in ELA. Currently, at the elementary level, we have grades two through five, and we have high ability classrooms. And in kindergarten, we have math explorations for kindergarten students and advanced math in first grade. We'd like to develop an English Language Arts model in grades two through eight that addresses a range of high ability learner needs, similar to what the middle school has in advanced and honors math instruction and course offerings. An alternative method could possibly be developed in conjunction with the elementary program evaluation scheduled to begin in 2017. That suggests greater differentiation and to fully address academic needs for all high ability learners that could mirror the delivery model we have currently in place in advanced math and honors math at the middle school level. Also, to investigate alternative delivery models at the elementary level, such as grade-level classrooms or cluster classrooms, to increase differentiated and/or blended opportunities for high ability programming at each grade level. For our current model has a two, three split class and a four, five split class. To be able to have the flexibility to have grade-level classrooms and to be able to differentiate those wide range of needs for our students, to know that that exists for us, I think, would be best suited, and what the research says would be best to meet their needs. Also, to embed technology and digital resources within the high ability classroom and the curriculum, we want to make sure that that is really a focused and intentional part of the program that we design, as opposed to a general happenstance inclusiveness of that, a very pointed piece. And I'll turn that over to him.
I don't have to bend it up as high. Which one am I hitting here? Space. There we go. All right. So one of the things that I truly enjoyed about being on this committee is just the idea that I think as we're reflective in our practices, we get to see all the great things that our teachers are currently doing. And this was evident as we looked at some of our evidence-based practices. And I'm not going to read all of these different practices that we may see, but I want to focus on a couple, and they kind of align with what Jay has talked about earlier. One thing that resonated with me is the idea that we're doing a lot of these things at the high school, as far as like offering programs and giving a lot of choice. But a lot of these next three slides kind of focus on what we could do in grades K through eight. We obviously want to make sure that our curriculum is aligned with the scope and sequence. We want to make sure that it's differentiated, that we're meeting the needs of all learners that we have, not just academic, but also with the social and emotional. One thing that I believe can be a challenge for our high ability teachers is just the idea of being able to get in everything, that they're supposed to teach, the pacing and the acceleration, but also stopping it and being able to compact when they need to. And that's one of the things that we talked about as a committee, that there are many times that people think that the high ability classroom might be one of the easiest classrooms to teach because they're high ability. And that's absolutely, I would say, just the opposites. I believe it is one of the toughest classrooms to teach, because even though they may be high ability, there's still a wide range of student need within that classroom. When we look to the strengths of our current program, mathematics, we're doing a great job. There's no doubt about it. We're offering and meeting the needs of all of our students, whether that be at the AP and IB courses, at the high school, all the way down to, as Jay just mentioned, kindergarten and first grade, having the opportunity in all kids in elementary, the ability to have the advanced math. At the middle level, which I believe this is true just here recently this year, the Core Plus gives our middle school teachers the opportunity to enrich our students and meet those needs of engaged high ability students in different activities. And then we want to look at the elementary, or we have that right now, the interdisciplinary studies provide differentiated learning opportunities for our high ability students. Now, the needs and challenges, as just mentioned before, the course differentiation is needed at the elementary level with the English Language Arts. So when we think about that, we're just trying to think about ways that we can mirror what we're currently doing in mathematics that we possibly could do in the English Language Arts area as well. We want to be able to offer those same types of enrichment and acceleration for grades K to eight in science and social studies. And a big thing, or the last two here in the needs and challenges, are just trying to improve the vertical alignment between K and eight. It is a challenge for me, as a building principal, to understand what our high ability teachers are teaching. It seems like it's, you know, they're second graders, but they're learning third grade, and is this the year that they're doing this? And that's what that last need and challenge is, is just trying to create some clarity and coherence within that program so that we're all on the same page. So our recommendations, we want to be able to develop challenging and enrich high ability opportunities for the science and social studies in grades K to eight. We want to look at that English Language Arts model for grades K to eight so that we can maybe increase some of those course offerings like we do for our advanced math or honors math. And then we want to make sure that we can provide some alignment, and we think that might help with some of the clarity and the coherence throughout grades K to eight.
Okay, good evening. And from this math teacher, I really wanted to wish you a happy Pi Day, but that thunder has been stolen. Okay, we have the affective dimension, and I choose to highlight this dimension and the evidence with a quick story from my own classroom. Just recently, I gave my students in my IB mathematics classroom a learning inventory, and it was, are you right-brained or left-brained? And so we had some discussion, we identified each other, and we moved on with the class, and I was presenting the concept of the day. And a student raises her hand about five minutes into the demonstration, and she says, "Mr. Purdon, you're being really right-brained right now. Can you help out my left brain? And please give me some details in the steps." Now, although that highlights some of the evidence of how we can incorporate the affective dimension in ways that, we need to let the students show self-understanding. And so she was showing understanding of- she was showing understanding of, "Hey, I'm this type of learner, and here's what I need." Social awareness, she was socially aware enough to say, "Hey, I'm not getting this," and maybe even notice that other students were having the same issue. And she was definitely displaying some self-advocacy. The evidence also suggests that we need to have students developing leadership skills and that they also need some career exploration. In addition, I see this all the time, that we need to provide students with the skills to cope with issues such as stress, perfectionism, and anxiety. And the focus on the effective dimension provides an important opportunity to certainly partner with the parents and the community. In terms of what we're doing well, the strengths of our current program, I know the district's recent focus on social and emotional learning is evident. I know this is apparent. My own children who go to Smokey Row, I have three there, they bring home the habits of mind, and we discuss them at the dinner table. So I'm very proud of that. They also feel free to highlight how maybe Dad may be failing in some of those habits of mind. But I appreciate that. That in conjunction with various school-based leadership and citizenship programs provide a strong foundation for addressing the effective needs of high-ability students. The next strength, I think I could almost say, is almost implied, but that our programs are challenging, they're rigorous, they're complex. I know this as a teacher, and I'm not unique, but I get letters all the time from students where I run into them, you know, after they're past high school, and they'll say, "Hey, college was so much easier than your class," which I take as a compliment. I know that they mean it as a compliment, that I think we're doing that well. Some needs under the effective dimension, certainly providing high-ability students with support in terms of anxiety management, social interactions, perfectionism, and coping skills. Again, I have a story to highlight this, that I took a group of students to the Rose Holman State Math Competition, and in celebration of winning, I think it was the sixth time in a row, we went to Subway. And I would just like to share with you some of the orders, details of the orders, so it kind of went like this. "Will you please make sure my tomatoes are symmetrically placed on my sub? Can you make sure the density of the lettuce is about a half-centimeter?" And my favorite was from a student named Charles, who says, "Can you please keep my bun in the oven until I reach the edge of the counter to maximize the warmth of my sandwich?" I think this highlights perfectly two things. One, one of our strengths, that we have math club, a way for them to, you know, have some leadership opportunities, but I think it also highlights the need on how to deal with the lack of perfection in our own subs. And I'll put that in quotes, because that could be their grades, that could be a project, that could be whatever you want it to be. And certainly, we find that it's very important that we're offering post-high school opportunities, college and career readiness and career exploration, and that's got to be true at all levels. And just anecdotally, I think I'm starting to see this more at the high school level. Certainly, I've seen a growth in project-based learning units where we're involving the community with that. And then I'm also part of a committee that is developing the senior seminar, which is looking to help those students transition from high school to college and make that transition easier. The recommendations here would be the following, that the district engage in parent and family community partnerships to enhance career aspiration and provide support for social, emotional well-being.
All of this leads us to professional development. How are we going to reach the teachers, help them, help these students? As you're looking over these evidence-based practices, I want to bring to your attention the addressing the characteristics of students with gifts and talents in the first bullet point, the third bullet point with continuing education through school districts, staff development, and providing professional development that models how to create environments and instructional activities that encourage students to express diverse characteristics and behaviors. These learners are different than other learners, and we need to address them as well as help our teachers understand how they learn. We're doing a lot of things really well in Carmel as far as professional development. We are really doing a great job addressing the curriculum needs, teaching our teachers how to teach the curriculum, providing collaborative opportunities for them to work with the curriculum. But we, after poring over lots of data that Eric and Martha gave us, we realized that we really aren't getting any professional development as far as addressing social and emotional needs. We need to spend more time addressing these emotional and social needs of these children as well as informing our educators of the different characteristics of these learners. We also need to, as well as continuing with our curriculum instruction, provide opportunities for differentiation within the high-ability classroom and social, emotional learning, again, twice-exceptional learners and our English learners. What we're recommending is professional development across the board. We need to continue doing professional development with curriculum in mind, but as importantly and probably more importantly, we need to address these students with a focus on, our teachers, as far as a focus on differentiation within the classroom to address all of these students, looking at the twice-exceptional student and their social, emotional learning for these students. This, I hadn't seen this before, but this is wonderful, that the whole, there's a whole third of this that pertains to social and emotional learning. Our teachers are really anxious to learn how to address these issues, how to help these students, how to work with them, and we need to listen to them and provide more professional Okay. So our five areas of inquiry, and how do we bring all of this together? So within our committee, we posted all of the recommendations on the wall. All of the recommendations were really important. And then we used what we call the "spend a buck" method. We call that "spend a buck lovingly" because our superintendent introduced that to us at our administrative retreat a couple of years ago. And every committee member gets some coinage, little stickers, and you can spend your buck in any denomination that you so choose and prioritize which are the most important recommendations of all. And so we posted all of those. All of the committee members spent their buck, and as they did that, they came up with final recommendations. And you'll notice that these collapsed some of the things you've heard tonight into six recommendations. The ones with the stars by them are the ones that got the most money from the committee. So, "We want to refine identification and placement procedures in accordance with Indiana Code and IDEO guidelines. Create a communication plan to provide systematic and timely information for all stakeholders regarding characteristics of high-ability learners and the identification process." We have taken many steps towards that already this year in refining our identification process, so that's a good, solid recommendation. Second one, investigate and expand program delivery options at the elementary and middle levels in English language arts to increase differentiated high-ability and learning opportunities, and improve vertical alignment of English language arts curriculum K through eight. That was a big priority. Third, develop options for K eight high-ability science and social studies programming. Next one, institute programming and supports at all levels to address the social and emotional needs of high-ability learners. That was probably the one biggest recommendation coming out of our high-ability program evaluation committee. Along with that, really, provide college and career exploration and readiness counseling for high-ability students, notice beginning at the elementary level. So I think those go hand in glove, but we spent our money on the top statement there. And finally, develop and implement a professional development plan for teachers, counselors, student services coordinators, that's systematic, with this focus on differentiation, meeting the needs of twice-exceptional high-ability students, our English learners, and that social, emotional piece for high-ability students. So those were our recommendations. And before we end and take questions, we want to leave you with a thought. This comes from Carol Ann Tomlinson, who's one of the premier researchers and authors in the area of gifted and talented education. And I hope you'll pardon me for just reading it out loud, but the ideas are important enough, I think we should. "So what it takes to teach gifted learners well is actually a little common sense. It begins with the premise that each child should come to school to stretch and grow daily. It includes the expectation that the measure of progress and the growth is competition with oneself rather than competition against others. It resides in the notion that educators understand key concepts, principles, and skills of subject domains, and present those in ways that cause highly able students to wonder and grasp and extend their reach. And it envisions schooling as an escalator on which students continually progress rather than a series of stairs with landings on which advanced learners consistently wait. It's not so hard to articulate. In schools where responsive instruction is a carefully supported indicator of professional growth, the capacity to extend even the most capable mind is a benchmark of success." Thinking about that idea of being really responsive to the learner, the very last paragraph in the quote, we think that really aligns with the mission and the vision of the Carmel Place Schools, entirely important for our high-ability learners, but I think we would extend that and say it's important for all of our learners. So with that, what questions, comments do you have for us?
I'm just going to go, wow. So much fabulous information. It's so comprehensive, and it really, I think all of us have had children in some component of a high-ability classroom, and it speaks to us, and we're, I'm just so excited. So I will defer to my colleagues to have some comments. So Kathy, go right ahead, please.
Well, this is something that is near and dear to my heart. And I'll just give you a little bit of history on this program. 1989, probably I was on that committee at that point in time. And I remember when my department chair approached me and asked me if I would be willing to teach Algebra II Enriched. And then it became MA Most Able, because we did want to have that wide branch and include not just the truly gifted, but also the very talented students who were willing to work hard. And then it became honors. And so I'm so excited to hear that we are still approaching it with this wide net and not being so restrictive that we leave kids who might just, like, thrive in an environment where they're surrounded by kids who think like them, even if they're not nearly academically as strong, they still grow from being with those kids. My own son was denied entrance into the honors program, not once, not twice, three times. This is my eldest son, who graduated as valedictorian at Carmel High School and now teaches math at Fisher's High School. He came to me in tears one time because he didn't make that test to get into honors biology. And he just said, "Mom, I'm never going to get in." And so I went to the biology department head, because I could pull a few strings. And I said, "Look, I promise, if he gets a C or B, I'm not going to cry about his grade or anything. Just give him a chance. He's made straight A's all the way through his career in school. The kid got straight A's, got five on the AP chemistry exam. He did fine in honors science." So keep that concept in mind. There are kids out there that get missed. And the other thing is, 2010 was the first year we won Rose Holman, and that was my last year at Carmel High School.
Thank you, Kathy. Tricia, go ahead.
Kath reminded me, so Kathy and I, in the early 2000s, worked together on this committee when we first worked together. About that. And really, fantastic information, and poured through it at home, and obviously we poured through it some more, but I just wanted to put something out there as, I was looking at some legislation today. I don't know what it means, but House Bill 1395 provides that a provision related to the high-ability students apply to performance-qualified school districts. That was, I read that in a synopsis today of that bill. So as that's unwrapped, and we do qualify as a high-performance school district, I don't know if that will open up some opportunities in actually some of your suggested recommendations as we, you know, pull all this together. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that there might be another avenue to help us all.
Thank you. Yeah. That's what I have. Any other questions? Yes, Pam?
Yes. I think this presentation has been wonderful, and you've got a lot of great ideas. I am looking at the possibility of all the recommendations that you have suggested, which sounds to me like we're looking at additional programming, additional teachers, additional IAs, a lot of additional staff. Knowing that we are still having trouble meeting the needs with the staff that we have currently and providing raises, et cetera, et cetera, I think the program is wonderful, but financially, I'm still a little bit nervous about what's, where we're going with this.
I think that one thing we want to keep in mind is that none of the high-ability programming recommendations would occur in a vacuum, so some of the recommendations for elementary, English language arts, science, and social studies would wrap into that elementary program evaluation overall, which would take into account the larger picture of resources, finances, all those pieces. So I think you raise a good point, but I think that would be part of the consideration there when you look at social and emotional learning and the professional development for that. Our counseling program evaluation included many recommendations for all students that I think could fold, our high-ability could fold into that. We would just need to make sure that it was very explicit as part of that. So again, not a standalone, but part of a bigger picture when we look at strategic planning and resource allocation and so forth. You probably noticed that technology integration didn't make the top six recommendations, although we spoke very eloquently to that, Jay did. I think that's because the committee sees that as a part of the larger picture of technology integration and the work of that committee within the district. So I think probably the key to making sure that what we do is doable and recognizes good and efficient use of public resources and equitable allocation of resources is that all of these recommendations are folded into and work in conjunction with the other action items, the pieces of the strategic plan that you have in place, and that we look at this through multiple lenses as we move forward.
Okay. I also have another question. How do you think an elementary day would look or unfold with this program the way it is being proposed? And will you be pulling more students out of a regular classroom? Since you'll be identifying more students, how would a regular classroom look? Because I know when I was teaching, we were always very worried that the high-ability students would be gone out of our classrooms, and we would be faced with middle to lower students.
Sure.
That's who I would be teaching. And so I understand that that would be a concern. And what do we call the old high-ability students that we used to have in the classroom now? Because we used to have the special ed, the middle student, you had your high-ability students, and then you had your gifted students. So there was this wide range of students, and so you still had high-ability students in your classroom, but they weren't the gifted students.
Well, I think that we're folding everything under the umbrella of high-ability. And if you think about this in terms of a continuum of services, there are some high-ability students who might need, kind of to borrow a special education concept, a least restrictive environment that is a separate classroom setting, a more restrictive placement where things are very unique and different, to be responsive to and to meet their needs. But we may find also, and we do know that this is the case, we have high-ability students in all of our general education classrooms, and there are a number of grouping patterns that have lots of good, solid research behind them, and one of them would be, just for instance, reverse clusters, where you have clusters of high-ability students in general education classrooms, and you have professional development and materials for teachers so that meeting their needs, so it's truly differentiated and unique for those students in their experience, yet they are part of the general education classroom. And that's one very supportive way of delivering the services, and that might be what we would deem best for some of our high-ability students, and to maintain the balance of students in the heterogeneous classroom, which we believe in and know that that's a very productive setting for learning. So those kinds of things, but I wouldn't want to presuppose or get out in front of what a different group of educators might decide as they look at this issue.
Any other questions? Well, I'd like to thank the committee, and there are so many of you who came, and I'm going to read the whole list, because I'm going to forget, I'm sure. Thank you, Martha, and Eric, and Jay, and Stephanie, and... Thank you, Martha, and Eric, and Jay, and Stephanie, and, wait, Sarah, thank you. I probably said my S. And Tim, and Lori, and Perdun, first name.
Dan.
Don, okay, Dan, thank you. And Lori Storey, you're out there too. Thank you. Thank you so much. We are very, very excited, very excited about what you've been able to present to us, and I thank you for all your time and effort because clearly there was a lot of effort put into this report, so I appreciate all of your support. Thank you. With that, do we have any? Nick, do you have anything you'd like to share?
No.
Board members?
Yep.
Meeting adjourned.